All right, I think we will go ahead and call to order the City Council meeting on Monday, September 8th, 2025. The time now is 6:06 PM. I know that some councilors are still filing in, but the first item on our agenda, once we have an agenda, will be an executive session. So why don't we go ahead and get started and then we can head down to the executive session? So as mentioned, the first item on our agenda is just that. There is a proposed recommended action on an amended agenda to adopt on civic clerk and would welcome a motion from anyone. Counsel Bergman.
Sure. I'd move to adopt the agenda as listed with the following amendment, which is noted on civic clerk, which is to remove from the consent agenda, item 5.5, a request to execute a lease agreement with the General Services Administration, the GSA, for Transportation Security Administration Office Space. That's TSA Office Base, and that's per Chief of Staff, Jacobson.
Thank you, Counsel Bergman. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Counsel Littman, any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So we have our agenda as amended. The next item on our agenda is anticipated executive session, as is our standard practice here. City Attorney Brown, could I turn to you to provide a brief description of the reason for needing to go into executive session?
Yes, thank you, Council President Travers. The open meeting law provides for executive session for discussion of labor relations agreements where the city would be placed at a disadvantage if the discussion was held during the open meeting, the public meeting. And so this is an executive session to discuss the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Burlington Firefighters Association.
Thank you, City Attorney Brown. We'll now head to a two-part motion. The first is a need for a finding to go into executive session. Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a motion on the first part?
Yes, I move to make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge regarding the proposed terms of a collective bargaining agreement with the Burlington Firefighters Association would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So we have our agenda as amended. The next item on our agenda is anticipated executive session, as is our standard practice here. City Attorney Brown, could I turn to you to provide a brief description of the reason for needing to go into executive session?
Yes, thank you, Council President Travers. The open meeting law provides for executive session for discussion of labor relations agreements where the city would be placed at a disadvantage if the discussion was held during the open meeting, the public meeting. And so this is an executive session to discuss the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Burlington Firefighters Association.
Thank you, City Attorney Brown. We'll now head to a two-part motion. The first is a need for a finding to go into executive session. Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a motion on the first part?
Yes, I move to make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge regarding the proposed terms of a collective bargaining agreement with the Burlington Firefighters Association would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a second motion?
Yes, based upon that finding, I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1B to discuss a labor relations agreement and to include in such session members of the city's negotiation team from the Department of Finance and Administration, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office, and the city attorney's office with outside counsel.
Thank you, Counsel McKnight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Counsel Schachter, any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a second motion?
Yes, based upon that finding, I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1B to discuss a labor relations agreement and to include in such session members of the city's negotiation team from the Department of Finance and Administration, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office, and the city attorney's office with outside counsel.
Thank you, Counsel McKnight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? All right, I will just note for the record that while the listed recommended action on civic clerk mentions that we may also be joined by members of the BFFA, that has been omitted from the motion made by Counsel McKnight here. So we will not be joined by members from the union in executive session. Any discussion on that item? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a second motion?
Yes, based upon that finding, I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1B to discuss a labor relations agreement and to include in such session members of the city's negotiation team from the Department of Finance and Administration, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office, and the city attorney's office with outside counsel.
Thank you, Counsel McKnight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? All right, I will just note for the record that while the listed recommended action on civic clerk mentions that we may also be joined by members of the BFFA, that has been omitted from the motion made by Counsel McKnight here. So we will not be joined by members from the union in executive session. Any discussion on that item? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a second motion?
Yes, based upon that finding, I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1B to discuss a labor relations agreement and to include in such session members of the city's negotiation team from the Department of Finance and Administration, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office, and the city attorney's office with outside counsel.
Thank you, Counsel McKnight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? All right, I will just note for the record that while the listed recommended action on civic clerk mentions that we may also be joined by members of the BFFA, that has been omitted from the motion made by Counsel McKnight here. So we will not be joined by members from the union in executive session. Any discussion on that item? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Counsel McKnight, could I turn to you for a second motion?
Yes, based upon that finding, I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1B to discuss a labor relations agreement and to include in such session members of the city's negotiation team from the Department of Finance and Administration, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office, and the city attorney's office with outside counsel.
Thank you, Counsel McKnight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? All right, I will just note for the record that while the listed recommended action on civic clerk mentions that we may also be joined by members of the BFFA, that has been omitted from the motion made by Counsel McKnight here. So we will not be joined by members from the union in executive session. Any discussion on that item? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The council is now in executive session. Public forum is set for a time certain of 6:30 PM, and so we will plan on returning to the auditorium at that time. Thank you.
Mayor, City Attorney Brown, could I turn to you to provide a brief description of the reason for needing to go into executive session?
Yes, thank you, Council President Travers. The open meeting law provides for executive session for discussion of labor relations agreements where the city would be placed at a disadvantage if the discussion was held during the open meeting, the public meeting. And so this is an executive session to discuss the tentative collective bargaining agreement with the Burlington Firefighters Association.
Thank you, City Attorney Brown. We'll now head to a two-part motion. The first is a need for a finding to go into executive session. Council McKnight, could I turn to you for a motion on the first part?
Yes, I move to make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge regarding the proposed terms of a collective bargaining agreement with the Burlington Firefighters Association would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Council Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And Council McKnight, could I turn to you for a second motion?
Yes, based upon that finding, I move to enter executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1B to discuss a labor relations agreement and to include in such session members of the city's negotiation team from the Department of Finance and Administration, the Fire Department, the mayor's office, and the city attorney's office with outside counsel.
Thank you, Council McKnight. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Council Schachter. Any discussion on that motion? All right, I will just note for the record that while the listed recommended action on civic clerk mentions that we may also be joined by members of the BFFA, that has been omitted from the motion made by Council McKnight here, so we will not be joined by members from the union in executive session. Any discussion on that item? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. The council's now in executive session. Public forum is set for a time certain of 6:30 PM, and so we will plan on returning to the auditorium at that time. Thank you.
All right, we will call back to order the regular city council meeting. Are we good on Town Meeting TV, Steve? Okay, excellent. So we had scheduled public forum for a time certain of 6:30. I appreciate folks' patience as the council made its way through the end of its executive session. The time is now 6:36 PM, and we will go ahead and open public forum at that point in time. Under our council rules, we'll first hear from Burlington residents here in City Hall, and then among those Burlington residents who are online. We would then repeat that process for any non-Burlington residents. As a reminder, if you want to participate in public forum online, you need to have signed up at least an hour in advance through the city council's website. Each speaker, whether in person or online, will be provided two minutes. When I call your name, if you're here in person, please come forward to the table here and make sure that the microphone itself is on. There's a green light on the microphone, not the green light on the timer, but on the microphone. When that's on, the mic is on, and please speak directly into it. For those online, I will let you know once you've been unmuted. When providing comments, please direct them to me as the chair and not to any other individual. It's important that City Hall remain a safe place for those who serve, those in attendance, and those watching our meetings. The council respects and values diversity of opinions and perspectives on public issues. We ask, however, that all comments be free from individualized attacks, particularly those based on any protected characteristics. If any individual does begin to get into individual attacks in their comments, I will interrupt them at that point in time. I will also interrupt a speaker if the public comments involve conduct which is unreasonably loud, disruptive, or discourteous. I will provide a speaker, if they've been interrupted, an opportunity to continue their comments in accordance with these rules, but if someone continues in violation of the rules, I reserve the right to end public comment at that point in time. We have these forms for Burlington residents numbered, and I don't have a number one. If someone still has a number one form with them, I don't have that here with me, so just a flag for folks in case you grabbed a form earlier. But I do have a number two, and so the first speaker I have here is Sherri Wormser, who will be followed by Bernie Calvi. Sorry, is the microphone itself on? There needs to be a green light on the microphone.
Push? Oh.
There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here to discuss the lease agreements with TSA and other agreements that are coming up at the Burlington Airport. We are all familiar that Burlington Airport has been a place in the past where ICE has transported detainees, and this is problematic in many ways, as you can imagine, but we have an opportunity to include language into those new lease agreements that can help protect citizens, non-citizens, and everybody going through that airport. We can use language, this administration is really wanting transparency and really wanting to protect women. We can use that language, including making sure that ICE is demasked. We know that women have been abducted and raped by people who are posing as ICE and are not. We can demand that they show warrants and badges. This can be language in their lease agreement. We can also include, this can also include whistleblower protections and increased education for staff into what is unwanted, people getting on the plane who do not want to be there. We do this for 16-year-old girls, we should be doing this for 29-year-old men. I feel like this is a really good time that, as the airport is looking to include new airlines, we can also include some of this verbiage and language into their lease agreements. We also know that TSA has most likely been using doors that they are not allowed to in order to sneak in ICE, and that is not acceptable. So these languages in the lease agreements can be helpful. I want to end with a quote from Amanda Gorman's "The Hill We Climb." "The new dawn blooms as we free it, for there is always light, if only we are brave enough to see it, if only we are brave enough to be it." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernie Calvet, who will be followed by Sam Donnelly. And Bernie, I apologize if I read your name here wrong.
That's okay, I apologize for my poor penmanship. My name is Bernie Carver, and I live in Ward Seven, and I'm here to ask the council to please, please, work together to make the overdose prevention center happen as quickly and expeditiously as possible. One of my first jobs when I got out of college was to work in a psychiatric ward in Evanston, Illinois, and what I learned quickly there was that these conditions can happen to anybody. My first negative experience was being attacked by a Harvard student. He was upset with me because I wouldn't take him for a walk, leaving during a staff meeting, leaving the rest of the residents to fend for themselves. So it's also true for medical conditions such as addiction can happen to anybody. And my most recent encounter with this population is working with the UU church at the top of Church Street, handing out food on Sunday mornings. And a conversation I had that really struck me, there have been many over the past three years, was a young woman who said, "You know, it seems like the city wants us to just die. That would save them a lot of money." And I really don't think that's who we are in Burlington, so please work together to make overdose prevention center happen as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Donnelly, who will be followed by Stephen Marshall.
Good evening. Can you hear me? All good? Great. Good evening. I first wanted to start by thanking you all for taking up the resolution that supports the BTV cleanup crew this evening, and I want to add that I want to thank the CDNR committee as well for all of the really, really important work they're doing around the issues facing our community and doing that work openly in the public with multiple work sessions and including a number of voices. If you haven't been to a CDNR committee meeting sometime, I highly encourage that, and I encourage you to interact with the councilors on that committee who are doing that work. On the BTV cleanup crew, I just want to add that that crew has been doing phenomenal work in the community since May. They've been bringing together Burlington residents who show up every Thursday morning at 7:30 AM outside of Crew Coffee at the top of Church Street, and then they band out into two different groups to go pick up litter around town, syringes, whatever else we find along the way. And through that process, you have a lot of really, really great interactions with folks you meet out that are part of the crew or just part of our community. I know a number of you councilors have been to that gathering and have participated in those cleanups, and I know firsthand that those of you who have know exactly what kind of impact I'm talking about. I also want to add that the cleanup crew, supporting the cleanup crew through a counselor initiative fund request, might seem like a very modest or small step, but it also helps demonstrate to our community that we can come together around some issues, that we can work together to make a difference, even if it's something as small as picking something up off the ground. It helps bring people into a solution-making process, it helps people feel like they're making progress on an issue, even if it's just small, and it helps grow civic engagement in our community, and that, to me, is worth its weight in gold, beyond just the small amount of funding. So I want to thank you for taking that up this evening and urge you all to continue your work that helps grow civic engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Our next speaker is Stephen Marshall, who will be followed by Bruce Wilson.
Greetings, councilors. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. So genocide in Gaza, the ICE arresting people who are innocent of any crime, a president systematically destroying our public institutions. You could say we are in dire times. I was reviewing the agenda, and I saw item number 5.10, and it went something like, "Burlington is almost dead, this is our last chance." And I'm like, "What?" It's really amazing to me how self-centered and self-focused some people can be, and I've been hearing the business community complain about the crime and everything. Yeah, there's crime, there's drug abuse, there's needles on the street, we have problems. Maybe the business community is having problems because there's not enough foot traffic and tourists. Okay, I accept that, that as members of our community, we care about the people who do business here, as well as everyone else, but let us not be looking at this world as one where this could be the end. I find this language really, really alarming. What the city needs is to take this as an opportunity. We are going to push back against fascism by taking care of people, by ensuring that our police do the right thing, that we hire police because they care about people, and then... You take it from there.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bruce Wilson, who will be followed by Charlie Messing.
Hello, everyone, City Council, I'm the mayor. So this is about Thorson Way, our murals and graffiti project, and I just want to let you everyone know too that I moved to Burlington, so I live in Ward Eight. And so I hope everybody enjoyed the Pride Festival, Human Rights Commission sponsor, and some of you know I'm the Human Rights Commissioner. And I want to thank Joe Kane for calling me about graffiti removal. Art's so wonderful, I appreciate that. And so what I want to talk about is that we continue to do graffiti removal since 2003, and I'm seeing this is the same old broken record, and then I, well, I'm gonna say a little bit about this, I think we just wasted $13,500 on a mural that we thought that might be successful around, around the city memorial turn, which my proposal for months was a little different, I didn't make a proposal, I just talked about it for months, about how we can make it happen for real, but that, so we eat up $13,800. So anyways, what I'm trying to do is now, talk about is, I want to thank Ward Six Becca, thank you, for sponsoring us, I don't know, I don't know how many times you sponsor Art's so Wonderful with graffiti removal, or come out, your whole team to come out and volunteer to clean up Thorson Way where we can put these cool murals out there, and now you're sponsoring us again to finish it up, and so I really appreciate, thank you so much for helping us, you know, and instead of wasting almost $14,000, it would have been $14,000, but we didn't have the money, so we had to give $13,500, because I think Art's so Wonderful wanted to get like $3,000, so we couldn't make it $14,000, you know. But I want to thank also the city council of Ben for always sponsoring us and looking out, knowing the work we do. If you go out there and you see all the graffiti, it's hardly none. Go down Thorson Way, you see no graffiti down there. It used to be dangerous, high-risk place where people dared to go down. Now they want to go down there, see the murals, see what's going on, it's nice and beautiful. So continue to sponsor us.
Thank you, Bruce. Our next speaker is Charlie Messing, and then Dave Marr.
Good evening, Ben, and I would say hello to everybody else one by one, except I don't have the time. The bus, the 11 bus that used to go up College Street to the hospital and then to the airport, it has been discontinued. I spoke to, or emailed back and forth with someone at the bus company, GMT, and they suggested that we take the bus up Main Street and get out at University Heights, walk across Main Street, walk across four parking lots to the hospital. I can do this, but I live in an elderly building, BHA, elderly housing, and 90% of the other people could not do that. They have walkers and everything, and so the person from GMT said, "It's just a 10-minute walk," and I want to write to them and say, "Come with one of our people and see how long it takes," because it's not a 10-minute walk for them. It's largely unworkable without the 11 bus. I don't know if other people will speak of this, but we really do need a bus to the hospital and to the airport and back. I don't really have any more time to talk about that or anything else, but I hope that we can clear up the park because they spent $12 million redoing it in hopes that it would not be like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Marr, and then our last Burlington resident here in City Hall is Pike Porter.
Good evening, my name's Dave Marr, I live in the New North End, and I got up early this morning because I want to take a look at City Hall Park, I want to see how it looked after the resolution that was passed to clean it up. So I got there about 7:45 in the morning, I saw one man sitting by himself on a park bench, smoking something that didn't look like a regular cigarette, that's okay. So another man, picking up syringes, asked him how it was going, and he said, "Not too bad, better than it used to be." So that's some progress. I happened to be out doing some shopping, and I stopped by at 1:30 this afternoon, and it was still looked pretty good. And then at 6:15 on my way here to City Hall, I took a look, and I would say it was probably marginally better than before, but that's some progress anyway. So I think the next thing we need to address is battery park, and I have an idea. What we should do is put a gate in front of the bandstand there, because it looks like it's become a magnet for bad behavior. So that's a suggestion, and I have another idea to address syringe litter. Now, some people think you shouldn't have to go to the Howard Center and return a syringe to get a new one, but I've got a solution. What we need is a machine. We put your old syringe in, push a button or turn a crank, you get a new syringe. We'd have many of those located around Burlington at high-use areas, and I think it's something that everyone could agree on, if only we could find such a thing. I looked on the internet quickly, and I couldn't find one, but you know, it seemed to me it's such an obvious thing, someone must have thought of it, and if you can't find one that's already been designed and available, I'll help you design one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last Burlington resident here in City Hall is Pike Porter. We'll then turn to Burlington residents online, and the first Burlington resident online will be Ryan Hagan.
Good evening, thank you for taking my comments. The TSA has been using its current space without a lease since 2024. There is no rush to approve a lease today, please remove it from the consent agenda. Mr. Longo and others have called the situation with the TSA and ICE incredibly complex. This is reiterated in the legal opinion they sought, I agree with that. I think the current lease should be used as an opportunity to take back some of the control at the airport and use the lease to make sure that the morals, the ethics, the values that we hold are occurring there. Unrelated matter, two years ago, I advised the city council that Burlington Electric might be inappropriately using repair funds for the district energy system. I was ignored. The PUC, Public Equity Commission, is now investigating that matter. Last year, I advised the city council that you need to get on top of the wacky accounting going on at BED, or you'll have an umbroglio on your hands. I was ignored, we now have an unprecedented audit. Please don't ignore this request, hire an energy expert to help meet our energy goals of cleaner, cheaper energy, and to help draft the 2026 IRP. This audit should be considered an opportunity to really move our energy goals of zero emissions energy forward. Ensure that the city council, perhaps through TUC, is a participant in the audit case. Don't leave it in the hands of Burlington Electric. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to Burlington residents online. We have three Burlington residents who signed up to speak online. The first is Ryan Hagan, to be followed by Robert Bristow Johnson, and then Sharon Buscher. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, which should be the timer, yes, and then I can promote Ryan, or if anyone else is on the Zoom and wants to promote Ryan to speak. Oh, okay, I had seen Ryan on there earlier. I see someone raising their hand, though, with a Google Pixel for a, I'm going to assume that that's Ryan, so could we promote that Google Pixel? Ryan, if that's you, you should now be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
That was me, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all, I just wanted to quickly echo pretty much what Pike just said, with the contract coming up with TSA, I want to make sure that y'all are doing what you can to ensure it's kind of aligned with our values and that people can't be obtained by the Fed without the city's approval. And on an unrelated matter, with the McNeil plant, I just want to voice, I don't want that to be expanded, I also just want to say that's not net zero, and so I'd urge the council to explore cheaper and cleaner alternatives, and yeah, I'm in Ward Five and just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Our next Burlington resident online- Our next Burlington resident online is Robert Bristow Johnson. If we could promote Robert, please. Robert, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself. And then, Robert, you'll be followed by Sharon Buscher.
All right. Can you hear me?
You're very quiet. Is there any way that you could speak closer to your microphone or phone?
Is this close enough?
That's, that's better. It's still a little quiet in here, but it's better. Go ahead.
I don't know where the microphone is on my computer, but I thought it was on the top of the screen here. I would like to speak about a proposed ordinance that has been passed by the ordinance committee. It's not on tonight's agenda, but it's about the ban on public nudity, ordinance that has not yet been adopted. And there's a couple of things I'd like to say about that, maybe three things while I'm thinking of it. So one, don't listen to the people who are saying that it's an attack, an authoritarian attack on our liberty or something. We're just banning people from exposing their, you know, their, and they're men, they're not women, they're men, that, or a man. We're just banning someone from exposing their genitals and their anus to people who are on Church Street who might be eating at a restaurant or something like that. We can be normal and do that. But let's be careful and not go too far. There are, there, I read of a town in Arkansas that had banned women from breastfeeding in public. And that's just ridiculous. So, and also, in, in the state of New York, the Supreme Court in New York ruled about thirty years ago that you couldn't apply a clothing law to women that you didn't also apply to men. And I sure don't want to be banned from taking my shirt off in a public place in Burlington, especially on a hot summer day. But then the last thing is make an exemption for beaches in Burlington. If you don't at least have a clothing optional portion of each of the main beaches, and then that entire city beach area that's north of Star Farm Road, up in my neck of the woods, including north of, North Gate, the North Gate Beach, that's traditionally and commonly used by people for nude swimming. And you should not ban those areas either. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Our next Burlington resident online is Sharon Buscher. If we could promote Sharon to speak. And then we have two non-Burlington residents that are signed up. One is Corinne Seda and the other is Kelly Devine. The only one who I currently see online is Kelly Devine. So Kelly, just know that if Corinne is not here, you will be next after Sharon. But Sharon, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to speak about the overdose prevention center. I mentioned this at the Board of Finance, but I wanted to speak about how informative that packet of information was for me as to where we are. And I pointed out one thing that I couldn't find. One of the people from the administration addressed this, but I thought it would have been important to include, once this center is operational, to spell out the process to address any community or neighborhood concerns. I think that's really important, and I know it is. I think we've all learned from our initiative with the pods that there wasn't adequate, there wasn't an adequate process to timely address concerns. And so I don't want us to, to fail in this respect. The second thing is that Pike Porter mentioned it, the communication that he included on the consent agenda regarding the Public Utility Commission and their citations or whatever for Burlington Electric over the last few years. It would have been really helpful for me to understand from the city, just generically, that there had been this problem and that it was going to be addressed and information would be revealed in a timely fashion. I care deeply about BED. I really value our public utility and I want us to address any problems and resolve any issues that are ongoing. So that's the rationale for my statement tonight regarding that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. That is our last Burlington resident. We had signed up to speak. We have two non-Burlington residents who signed up online. One was Corinne Seda, the other is Kelly Devine. I do not see Corinne Seda online. Corinne, if you're on, under a different name, if you could please use the raise hand function. Otherwise, if we could promote Kelly Devine to speak, that would be great. All right, Kelly, you should be able to go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President Travers. I'm speaking for a couple of reasons. One, I want to thank the many Burlington business owners as well as Burlington residents who took the time to write into the council to let them know their concerns about public safety and share some of their personal experiences. Some of those letters appeared in this week's consent agenda. And, you know, it's, it's not easy to speak about these items which are challenging to solve and also, you know, can be fraught. And I really applaud the courage of everyone who was willing to speak out. These things are happening in very real time for so many of our businesses. And, you know, yet again, I want to acknowledge that we saw another business announce that it was closing down the Griffin, which, you know, I thought was a great part of our local community. These are local business owners with a lot at stake, and I think we're going to continue to see this trend if we don't work together to do something about the real challenges about behavior in our streets. We also heard from some visitors who talked about their experience, and we know that that's very real as well. I want to thank the City Council and mayor support for trying to address some of these issues, especially in City Hall Park. I think we have to continue to find ways forward to do some work to address these things. I also want to thank City Council for bringing forward the small amount of stipend money for the cleanup that's happening in the morning. These kinds of community events where we come together to care about our downtown and about Burlington, I think are not only important for the city because it gets cleaned up, but also for voting for the fact that we love Burlington and we want to see it continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. That was the last speaker we had signed up for public forum, so we will go ahead and close public forum now at seven oh five PM. And I'll stop sharing my screen here. That now takes us to our consent agenda as amended. If I could get a, oh, excuse me. I skipped over you, Mayor. The next item on our agenda is Mayor, General City Affairs. And then we'll turn to our consent agenda. So Mayor, we'll turn the floor to you.
Thank you very much, President, Council President Travers. So I just want to give a few updates on community safety, as I usually begin, and then a few miscellaneous updates for the community. The first bit of good news, because it's been several months of work by the administration, is we signed and sealed and delivered a contract with our police union, the BPOA, last week, and we signed it at the Burlington Police Department. This contract is a really good move for the city as we continue to put forward recruitment and retention strategies in plain language within now the settled collective bargaining agreement. The work of putting this contract together really reflected a lot of good faith back and forth with the BPOA, which represents our police officers, as well as the administration within our fiscal constraints, but knowing that we really need to invest what we can strategically to remain competitive in the region, to attract both new hires, but also attract lateral hires, which are folks who have already have experience as a police officer to join our ranks. So it was a, it was a good, a good step forward in terms of the multiple parts we're putting in place to rebuild our Burlington Police Department. The second piece I want to just briefly speak to, per the council resolution, last meeting on City Hall Park, a couple of days, I think that Thursday evening, Chief Burke put together a new directive for our night shift for police officers to do walkthroughs throughout the park. And so we've been closely monitoring how this has impacted both City Hall Park, but the downtown immediate area and other areas within the city, public spaces in particular, on any, any additional impact pushing out of people. We will have a full study of this, or at least our analysis, on the next council meeting on September twenty-ninth, per the City Council resolution. And I hope we have a holistic conversation together to really look at what does this particular strategy do? Where did it work? Where do we still need to be very mindful about the fact that many folks don't have options in, given the realities of our homelessness crisis? But also, how are we able to see things that are working towards the benefit of having public spaces like City Hall Park be usable and safe for everyone? Today, we released an email to downtown partners to make sure that we folks know how they can engage the administration and the city on being able to help us collect that information in terms of any additional activities people are seeing or behaviors in other spaces, including in private property and areas. But that also includes our faith partners, the faith communities, many of which are located in the downtown core, our community nonprofits and organizations, as well as the businesses and other entities and larger residential buildings in the immediate area. This is a work in progress. The next piece I want to speak to is a bit of setting the record straight because our office has received a lot of communication because there's been some confusion about state offer of state-level law enforcement to the city of Burlington. And I wanted to read a portion of a public statement I put out, just a portion from last week, just to really make sure that folks are clear about what engagement has happened with the state and what has not happened. So I just want to be clear, there has been no offer by Governor Scott or the Commissioner of Public Safety or the Commander of the State Police to provide supplemental law enforcement resources to the city of Burlington. I've consulted with Chief, and because there's been nothing offered, I've also not rejected any such offer because that was another piece of information out there. I have consulted with Chief Burke, our police chief, and we are in agreement that a contract with the Vermont State Police or any outside agency is not warranted at this time. And as such, I have not requested support from the Vermont State Police. Chief Burke and I work closely together in a strong partnership, and I lean on his expertise as well as the chief of our fire department, Chief Curtin, to advise us on when things change or shift and when we might need additional resources. And always open for more conversation with the City Council as well on that. But back to my statement, because this is helpful for City Hall Park as well. Following the council's passage and my signing of the resolution related to a safe and accessible City Hall Park last week, Chief Burke issued a directive to adapt BPD deployment during the night shift. This directive went into immediate effect on Thursday evening, August twenty-eighth. Under this guidance, BPD officers are conducting walkthroughs of City Hall Park to enforce the closing hours between twelve AM and six AM. We will continue this strategy for the foreseeable future and assess success in improving conditions in the park, while also monitoring other areas in the city for any negative impacts associated with displacement of people from the park. We will engage both the users of the park as well as members of the downtown community to ask for their input as part of this assessment. Again, we're bringing that back on the twenty-ninth. I also just want to read this last section here. "The resolution passed by the City Council offered three specific requests of the state of Vermont that we feel are urgent to combat the concerning statewide trends. These requests include convening key stakeholders, such as regional law enforcement partners, who will develop a coordinated response to low-level drug, drug trading, youth service organizations, schools, and human service staff, who will examine trends in young people involved in violence, drug trading, and gun possession, and identifying strategies for intervention. And representatives from the Department of Health and Mental Health, who will discuss removing barriers to access treatment of substance use disorder and mental health. It continues to remain my goal, as the mayor of Burlington, to collaborate with state leaders to address issues facing both our city and our state." And I'm going to move on now. I just want one more thing I'm going to add on state specifics. We're continuing to refine that list, both what was in the City Council, but additional input from my administration, and we're reaching out to stakeholders as well, to get as specific as possible with strategies that really move us forward. And it'll be multiple strategies because that is truly a way to address the complexities facing the city of Burlington, and we hope to also engage City Council on that discussion so we can be clearly speaking as in much of a unified way as possible in a constructive direction for the city. Now onto a few miscellaneous updates. As I've mentioned in the prior mayor updates, I was selected to be part of the Harvard-Bloomberg City Leadership Initiative among forty-six other mayors across the world. And this has allowed resources to come to the city of Burlington to help and to accelerate a particular initiative. And I selected the housing priority that I stated when I became the mayor, which is how to build and accelerate more ample, affordable housing for residents of Burlington and future residents. So the City Leadership Initiative is begun in earnest. We have a city team of eight to ten individuals. Bloomberg will be sending individuals throughout the next nine to ten months to help us accelerate and innovate in this space. And we will be bringing reports back to council because, of course, housing is such a critical piece of what the city needs to both thrive, but to make sure that folks can continue to afford to be able to live in Burlington. I also traveled last week on Friday to Quebec with the other mayors of Vermont. There are eight mayors in the, in the state. Eight municipalities have a city structure where they have a mayor. Most of them traveled with me. And we met with about five mayors in Quebec, including the mayor of Granby, who hosted us, to talk about the impacts on our communities plainly from the Canadian, sorry, with, because of the tariffs and the rhetoric coming out of Washington DC from our president against Canada. And it was very eye-opening in terms of understanding, even if tariffs aren't specifically applying to the industries and the manufacturers and the employers and in Quebec, it's having a dramatic chilling effect on many of those folks across the border, which is impacting workforce sizes, it's impacting strategic investments that Canadian businesses are willing to do or not. It's slowing down existing trade patterns and visiting patterns, as we know, with the city of Burlington. I shared Burlington's experience so far, where we've seen a drop in both our marina, we have a public marina, with the overnight rental slips for our marina. We've seen a drop of almost two hundred Canadian visitors this season. Also downward impacts on our municipal campground. Those are revenue streams for the city of Burlington. And while things have rebounded a little bit anecdotally on Church Street in terms of Canadian visitors, I was pretty astounded to hear the much more dramatic impacts that Newport, St. Albans City, and even Montpelier and Berry have seen. They reported upwards to twenty to thirty percent reduction in their, especially local business, retail, and hospitality industries. So I mention that because we are trying to stand together with our Quebec neighbors as both, both a symbolic but strategic partnership to take, to take those relationships in our own hands and to make sure we have deeper ties directly so that the folks to the north know that the president does not speak for Burlington nor the majority of the state of Vermont. And it's having a dramatic negative impact on so many of our small communities, especially local businesses. I'll update you more as we continue to develop those relationships, but it was, I think, a very helpful first start with trying to find some paths forward. This week, the Tax Fairness Working Group will wrap up, and I appreciate the counselors that have been serving on that, that group for the last several months. Their recommendations will come forward to my office. I'll review them and I hope in, probably not the twenty-ninth, but maybe in your first meeting in October, to share some of those recommendations from that group, which has been a good partnership between residents as well as city staff. Council President Travers and I have been putting, been putting some time in to meet with faith leaders in our community on a sort of a new initiative to use a circle dialogue process, one for which, if you have been following the St. Joseph survivors story, was a similar restorative process used in that very long and important journey of healing and reckoning as a community. But in this setting, we've been using this circle dialogue process to engage with faith leaders on the issue of Gaza and Israel, and specifically the impacts that this issue has had in our community in terms of how we engage and how we can find perhaps better understanding, but a path forward on how we engage in these very difficult conversations. There were three rounds of these dialogues. I'm hopeful that this is a learning space for us to be able to figure out how to convene and how to convene specifically around really difficult issues that large outsize Burlington, but still show up here in our community. It's painful, it's hard work, but I'm hopeful and I'm appreciative of the faith leaders who've been engaged in this conversation. And then finally, speaking of St. Joseph's survivors, some counselors joined me at a memorial and a ribbon cutting for a beautiful piece of artwork that's a memorial and a space of reflection at Keeslick Park, which is right off of North Avenue, next to Cambria and Rise. What is now Cambria and Rise, a vibrant new neighborhood is, that's being built as you see it, is also a very important space, land for which there are survivors of the harms and the abuse that happened at St. Joseph's Orphanage. And so it was a beautiful convening of community to both remember, reflect, and not forget, and to learn how we can both honor the history, but also give a place for reflection and healing for our community. Because that's an important part as a city is to not sweep away things out of our history and to make space for, for these, these important healing moments. Finally, to wrap up quickly, I want to just thank the Pride Center of Vermont for putting on another successful, vibrant pride parade and pride event all week long. We had a big parade here in the city yesterday. Hundreds of people gathered at City Hall Park to begin the parade and marched down to the waterfront. It was a beautiful sight. This same weekend, we had Art Hop, which also brought upwards, probably thousands of people to the South End for three days of engaging with our artists and our arts community, the makers and the artists. And then finally, I want to make sure folks know that on Friday, the Flynn Center And then finally, I want to make sure folks know that on Friday, the Flynn Center will be on Friday, September 12th, and I did not write the time down, a back-to-the-school, maybe Councilor Schachter can tell me, 6:00, 6:00 p.m., I imagine, not 6:00 a.m. A back-to-school, a celebration in partnership with the Flynn and the Burlington School District called Playing Fields at Edmonds Elementary and Middle School, again, at 6 o'clock on Friday. You would have gone to preview if you went to the pride parade, but there's these beautiful, majestic giraffes that are puppetry, I hope I had that right, and they'll be doing a beautiful performance to help welcome back families and students and educators to start of the school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. That now takes us to item five, which is our consent agenda as amended. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended and take the actions indicated?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Schachter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Singh. Any discussion on that motion? All right, we'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. That now takes us to our deliberative agenda. Just in case anyone is tuned in for it, we do have a local control commission meeting that was warned for 7:30 p.m., so I think we will take this first one or two, probably the first deliberative agenda item, and then we'll pause briefly to do the local control commission and then continue with item 6.2. But item 6.1 is a resolution recognizing Vermont Green FC's national championship victory and reaffirming our shared commitment to environmental sustainability, social equity, and inclusion. Councilor Barlow, could I turn to you to please introduce this resolution?
Certainly you can, and I would normally move to waive the reading, but since we have Patrick Inferno, one of the founders of Vermont Green, here in the audience, I think I'm going to try to read the whole thing here. I did time it, and I think I can do it in a reasonable amount. So, that, excuse me, "In the year 2025, resolved by the city council of the city of Burlington as follows: That whereas the Vermont Green Football Club is our Burlington-based soccer team founded in 2021, and whereas Vermont Green FC's mission centered on environmental sustainability, social justice, and community engagement is shared by the city of Burlington; and whereas since its inaugural season in 2022, Vermont Green FC has integrated these core values into its operations, from pursuing carbon-neutral practices and promoting climate action to championing equity and inclusion both on and off the field; and whereas in just its fourth season of competition, Vermont Green FC achieved not just an undefeated season but the 2025 United Soccer League II National Championship, marking the first national title for Vermont Soccer Club at this level; and whereas Vermont Green FC kept off the 2025 season with a thrilling 2-1 victory in the USL League II Championship match on August 2, 2025, before a standing-room-only crowd of thousands of fans at the University of Vermont's Virtue Field, bringing the national championship trophy home to Burlington; and whereas throughout the 2025 regular season and playoffs, the team demonstrated exceptional skill, teamwork, resilience, and resilience in defeating top clubs from across the country during their playoff run and uniting supporters with dramatic memorable performances; and whereas Vermont Green FC's success has been an energizing and uniting force for the Burlington community, with home matches regularly drawing capacity crowds, reflecting tremendous local fan support, and creating a vibrant game-day atmosphere in the city; and whereas the presence and popularity of Vermont Green FC have provided economic and cultural benefits to Burlington, attracting visitors and boosting local businesses on match days, while also elevating Burlington's profile on the national sports stage; and whereas the club actively engaged with youth and community organizations across greater Burlington, hosting free soccer clinics, sustainability workshops, and other outreach initiatives that inspire young Vermonters and foster the next generation of athletes and environmental stewards; and whereas Vermont Green FC exemplifies the ideals of sustainability, equity, and inclusion that the city of Burlington strives to uphold, demonstrating how sports can be a platform for positive social and environmental impact. Now therefore be it resolved that the Burlington City Council hereby honors and congratulates Vermont Green Football Club, including its players, coaches, and staff, for winning the 2025 USL League II Championship and extends the city's sincere appreciation for their hard work, talent, and dedication in achieving this historic accomplishment. And be it further resolved that the city council recognizes Vermont Green FC's outstanding contributions to Burlington's civic pride and unity and commends the team for bringing national recognition to our city through their success on the field and their principled mission off the field. And further be it resolved that the Burlington City Council reaffirms its commitment to the values of environmental sustainability, social equity, and inclusion championed by Vermont Green FC, and pledges to continue supporting initiatives that advance these shared values in our community. And be it further resolved that a formal copy of this resolution be transmitted to the owners and leadership of Vermont Green Football Club as a token of the city's pride and gratitude. So, and thank you, Patrick, for being here tonight. And I think we need a second on that, still.
Thank you, Councilor Barlow, seconded by Councilor Broderick. Are you all set, Councilor Barlow?
I just want to add that, you know, I was able to attend three of the playoff games at Virtue Field, including the championship game, and it's truly an amazing atmosphere. And when paired with the success that the UVM men's soccer team had last December, winning the national championship as well, it's, these two accomplishments together have really put Burlington on the map as a soccer center nationally, so we appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Councilor Barlow, and thank you for stomaching my constant asks for hookups to tickets during the season, so onwards to next season. Councilor Broderick.
Thanks. Just quickly, who knew that championship soccer would run through Burlington? Pretty awesome to see. I just wanted to congratulate Vermont Green FC and also, what wasn't included in the resolution, thank the club for its, and reaffirm their commitment to uplifting organized labor and showing solidarity with the labor movement. I know a lot of people who love Labor Night, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Broderick. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this? We'll go to Councilor Grant.
I think this is a great resolution. I think it's important to recognize the hard work of this team, these young people. I think it's a beautiful thing, but I would really be remiss if I didn't raise my continued concern about how we are not moving in our community with a respect for differences and a respect for racial equity and a respect for equity for all marginalized groups. And I see as things get worse at the national level, things are getting worse here, and there tends to be this belief that, no, we're not like that, and I think we have to really take a hard look at that. It wasn't that long ago where we had numerous instances where we had situations with some schools that couldn't even have spectators at games because of the amount of racial tension. And it was really beautiful to see the community come together to support this team, and I think we really need to, if we're going to support this resolution and we want to believe things that it says, then we have to act upon it, and we have to take a look at our actions or lack of actions in consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this resolution? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote, we'll go to a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, so congratulations to the Vermont Green team. Great. Thank you, and thank you for being here, Patrick. As mentioned, we had warned our local control commission for a time certain of 7:30. It's now just about that time, so why don't we briefly recess the city council meeting at 7:27 p.m., and we'll now call to order our meeting as the local control commission for a motion on our agenda as the local control commission, Councilor, or Commissioner Broderick, could I turn to you as chair of our license committee?
Thank you. I would move to adopt the agenda as listed on Civic Clerk.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have just two items in our deliberative agenda. Commissioner Broderick, can I turn to you for an item on 2.1?
I would move to approve the 2025-2026 first and third-class liquor license applications for DOMA Bar, 366 Pine Street, Suite 2, with the following conditions: contingent upon fire marshal approval and will fall standard conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schachter, any discussion on that motion? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, and now Commissioner Broderick, item 2.2.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 outside consumption permit application for AC Hotel, 130 Bank Street.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Schachter. Any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Litwin.
Can I just get a question since I don't often make it to the glamorous world of licensing? I'm sorry, thank you, Chair Broderick. This location, when would it be opening? I'm just looking at the application here.
Do you know the answer to that off the top of your head, Commissioner Broderick?
Actually, I'm here representing the...
Okay, we have the applicant here. If you want to come forward to the table here, if you're okay with that, and...
Thank you.
I think I need you for you to get the answers that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
My pleasure. My name is Kat Stevens, and I am representing the AC Hotel in Burlington, which is opening on the 18th of this month.
Great, thank you. And so the outside consumption permit would be, if voted on, would go into effect around the 18th of this month, or would that be later?
No, it would be on the day that we open, and this outside area, it's not on the street level, it is on the second floor, and it is actually enclosed on, it's a rectangle. It is enclosed on five sides of the rectangle. There's only one side that's open to the street.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you, because I'm one of the few councilors who unfortunately hasn't gotten to tour the new City Place building, and just for one more year, our high school is next door to that address, so I just wanted to be mindful, since I didn't know that that was going to be on a second floor, so thank you. I feel like I got my questions answered.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, comments from councilors or commissioners? Okay, we'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thanks very much for being here, and we'll look forward to joining you on the 18th.
I'm the only Kat Stevens in town, and you can come and tour me anytime. I've got all kinds of 161 rooms to show you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Seeing no other business before the local control commission, we will adjourn that meeting at 7:31 p.m. and return to our regular city council meeting for deliberative item 6.2, which is an item seeking authorization to accept a grant from the state for the overdose prevention center pilot grant funding from the Vermont Department of Health to develop and implement a fixed-site OPC in Burlington and administer award awards to the qualified and approved OPC provider. On this item, I know that we're joined by Teresa Vazina, but Mayor, would you like to introduce this item, or should we turn to Teresa here?
We're probably going to turn to Teresa because the title of this was long enough to be a filibuster, so thank you, Councilor President Travers. We'll have, once Teresa gets settled in, we'll have her dive into the overview, and then I will just help answer questions as is needed.
Great. Teresa, do you need to be promoted to a panelist here? Do you have a presentation to share or anything like that?
Oh, no.
Okay, great. Just wanted to confirm.
Okay.
So the floor is yours when you're ready.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks for the Board of Finance earlier. I was able to speak with them and just kind of give you all the framework for where we're at with asking for the approval to accept the grant. This grant is the grant that will allow the city to receive the funds, which will execute the approved project plan and compliance plan that was unanimously approved on April 28th. We then took the city council-approved project plan and compliance plan and submitted it to the Vermont Health Department. They accepted that proposal on May 5th. Since that time, over the last few months, the city and the state have been working towards getting this draft contract. The city did experience a little bit of a delay while we were securing the correct kind of insurance and making sure that that met the state requirements. It slowed us down by about three and a half weeks, but we were able to pretty quickly address and resolve that issue. We received our draft contract on August 22nd, and we worked with City Attorney Office to look at that language. It was bounced back, and the final contract, which you all have in your packet, was received on September 3rd. During that time, we also have been working on the draft subrecipient agreement and scope of work in collaboration with the City Attorney's Office and the team at DFA and the mayor's office. This contract is a total amount of $2.2 million, which represents state funds through the opioid settlement funds for state fiscal year '25 and state fiscal year '26. These funds for the first year, the first 12 months of the year, will focus on phase one of the compliance plan. So phase two of the compliance plan is the more operating component of the project, and the state contract requires the city and our subrecipient VCJR to submit a 12-month budget for the phase one, as well as a detailed work plan and timeline. The service assessment work has already begun July 15th. The mayor's office executed a small vendor contract with Pire, who is the external evaluators that we'll be using for the service assessment and the neighborhood assessment as well. So that work has begun and will continue through until, to get to that point where we have this findings report. Every time there's an adjustment or an update made to the work plan or the timeline, it is going to be informed by what we learned from the service assessment, the neighborhood assessment, and ongoing community engagement activities. So it is required of the city and our subcontractor that we make sure that our work plan is informed by the requirements of the operating guidelines. I want to just reiterate that the, there has no site selection work has begun yet. We will be sticking to the compliance plan and working through a site acquisition plan, and just as a reminder, we will be coming back here to you all with potential site options, and also there's going to be zoning and ordinance, and at the end of the day, you all have the final say and approval of site location. Just a little bit on the structure of the grant, it's a little different than a lot of our other grants are usually a reimbursement model. This grant in particular is actually utilizing a prospective funding model, so it allows the city to invoice in advance for each quarter, which then we would be providing a quarterly reconciliation and reporting out back to the state, and that is a pass-through requirement for our subgranted VCJR as well in order to access the next quarter's funds. Those must be submitted to the state and approved with all the proper financial backup as well as the progress reports. I think I'm actually going to pause there and see if there are questions, and I also do have sort of talking points that I'm talking about as a one-pager, which I can hand out to you all after, so.
Great, thank you very much. We'll now open the floor to councilors for any questions or comments from folks. Does anyone want to get in the queue? Councilor Schachter?
I know you just briefly touched on this, but I think just for the public and for our knowledge as well, can you, I guess, just sort of walk us through, I know site selection hasn't begun yet, and there's still some stuff happening behind the scenes, but what should we sort of be expecting and looking for over the next, say, six to nine months or so? months or so?
Well, definitely this component with the service assessment. So you will be seeing a well-rounded community engagement process. We want to do all the kind of normal things: surveys and forums and listening sessions. But also, there's going to be a really big component of education and awareness, letting people know, like, what is this center about? Like, how is it going to be part of the solution? How is it going to not solve everything? You know, just really trying to be really transparent about what the Overdose Prevention Center will be providing for services and how we can work together. We really want to make sure that the center can be integrated into all the other services, social services, health services. But it also, to be successful, we really do believe that community engagement is going to be a really big part of it. So you'll definitely be seeing that. You'll be seeing surveys, both for broadly the community, but also there will be very specific focus groups for the sectors that are in the requirements of the operating guidelines. In the operating guidelines, there is an immense amount of policies and procedures that need to be developed with the administrative body of VCJR. And this is really important, because when we start to look down the list of different policies and procedures, it's nuts and bolts, like A to Z. And I know that there are, when I was talking to Council President Travers, was a question about, like, what would security look like, or, you know, and these things are required in the operating guidelines. So the OPC can't open until all of the policies and procedures have been developed, submitted, and approved by DSU at the Health Department. So those are probably the very first big things that will, and you won't necessarily always see the policy and procedure stuff, but it's going to be happening very diligently to get us to that next stage, hopefully, for opening. But site selection's a big undertaking as well. So hopefully, we're going to be seeing some movement around just options and ideas, and we know there's a lot of work to do around that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schachter. We'll go Counselor Litwin, and then Counselor Carpenter.
Thank you. I get the benefit of getting to talk to you more frequently, so I won't take as much time, hopefully. But first, I just want to thank Teresa for just this incredible amount of work that she is taking on, and then the stuff that you don't even see about that she's taking on behind the scenes beyond just the OPC. So I'm really grateful that we have your expertise and tenaciousness. Counselor Schachter actually asked one of my questions, which was super helpful. I guess the follow-up for me would be, when we're doing the listening sessions and education sessions, will there be space for hearing the real concerns of folks, trying to dispel mythology, but also being mindful that some of those will be very real, right? Real concerns that need to be acknowledged and held as part of our plan for a community response, so that the OPC can be successful, because otherwise, it won't be. And then the second part of my question is, and Counselor Carpenter has brought this up before, around co-location of syringe exchange or SSP provision. Is that something that is on the table? And then lastly, when we talk about a safety or security plan, we've heard throughout the past at least two years that I've been on the council, or almost two years, concerns from a variety of folks on or around Clark Street. And so Howard Center's security plan is sort of responsible for, like, the four walls, four boundaries of their property, and then the rest falls to BPD. Is that going to be the case for wherever the OPC is located and, you know, in that six to nine months that you're working, will you be working with police and fire to think about, what does the broader community safety plan look like beyond the four walls of that building? Sorry for the three questions.
I'm getting used to that. So I'm trying to keep track of all the questions. So the first was the community engagement piece, and whether or not we would genuinely be listening to people's concerns. And that's 100% yes. I think we can say words, but you'll be able to see it in the actions that we take. And so, that's all I can say about that. And I think it's important to recognize that also, we'll listen, but I think it's really going to be an opportunity to talk about what possible strategies, because I think it, and I think I may even mention this in the work session, like, no matter what it is, whether it's an OPC or an SSP, or I don't even know another thing to choose, but, you know, nothing is going to be without some issues, right? So I think it is addressing them, being honest about it, and then trying to work together to create strategies and solutions. So that's going to be a really important component. Sharon Buscher asked earlier in the Board of Finance meeting about how would we continue to, you know, pass the early phases? How will we continue to address community concerns as they arise? And I think that's going to be another important component that will be addressed in policy and procedure development. And I remember that when VCJR spoke, they spoke about the good neighbor sort of idea, that they really want to be a good neighbor beyond those four walls. The, I've met with Chief Curtin and Chief Burke and the component around security and emergency protocols. Absolutely, they have confirmed that they want to be at that table. They need to be at that table. The guidelines clearly state that any policy and procedure is done in collaboration, so not in a vacuum, and will include those folks that have the expertise and that we really need at the table. Syringe service programming is required, so the OPC operator either has to hold their own licensure and be registered with the State of Vermont as a syringe service program, and they need to follow the syringe service program guidelines and requirements. Or alternately, if the OPC provider chose to go another direction, they could actually then have an existing SSP submit an application to embed their services directly at the OPC. I do know that in the letters of support, Vermont Cares has, who is already working with VCJR, will be doing the drug-checking services, which is also a requirement of the guidelines. So I think that's all your questions? Okay.
Thank you, President Travers.
Thank you. Counselor Carpenter?
Thanks. I, Counselor Litwin, asked some of my questions. I see this as an opportunity, in addition to the OPC, to do community assessment. And I'm just, we hadn't talked about this, but you're going to have the resources, you're going to be doing the work, and I'm just asking that as that work continues in a parallel, that you keep a surprise of what else we're missing. I mean, I've got lots of thoughts on that, but I think it's a great opportunity to say, if we invest in the OPC, it could fail because we are missing this. And the need for the OPC may be because we're missing this. So I just want to ask that we use this as a really data-driven opportunity to advocate for some additional resources.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carpenter. I do not have any other councilors in the queue at the moment. We'll go to Counselor Grant, and then Counselor Barlow.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and just some very, very important reminders about the process and what the public can expect from the process. As a former police commissioner, and I had looked into these issues going that far back, I joined the Police Commission to really help focus on oversight and accountability, but was very, very quickly drawn in by cries for help from the community in wards 2 and 3 around the drug activity. And as I read in the last meeting, an email from 2020, I have many emails going that far back. I think we have to, as part of our conversation, I am asking residents of Central District to really be mindful of some of the fear mongering that's going on. You know, Clark Street is a street that I used to live on. I am very well aware of the concerns, but what was happening on Clark Street, it was like, literally at one point, surrounded by multiple drug houses, including one right down the block and around the corner on Grant Street. That's the source of the issues, not the needle exchange program. It literally was these houses that were operating with impunity for some time, and they were affecting the pods, Peru Street, and activity that we saw downtown. So I think we have to keep our eyes on the crisis that we're trying to solve, and I look forward to the community engagement so that we can really address some of the myths that people have. People have concerns about how much this will cost. When, we also will need to talk about how much money it's going to save, because when we don't have our police and fire teams having to respond constantly to overdoses, that's going to save money on that end. So we'll have an investment, but hopefully get to the point where we have such savings that we can see the effectiveness of the program. I also am concerned about fear mongering around children. If a child walks into an OPC, they're going to be surrounded by people who specialize in harm reductions, and who are going to want to help that child and figure out why they're making the decisions that they are. I also feel that we need to look at what's happening to our children right now. Children who are affected by their parents using, they've lost parents, either to overdose or to our judicial system. They've maybe lost housing, because when there's substance use disorder in a household, that can destabilize the household. They've seen people using. They've been approached by traffickers to sell drugs. These are real things that we need to help prevent, real things that are going on, and we don't have to make up possible scenarios. We need to talk about what's really going on. I don't have a timer, so I can't see how much time I have left.
Minute thirty.
Okay, thank you. And in addition to that, I will have to say, for the location, I certainly don't want it on Church Street, but we do have to look at places in the Central District, as the Central District is the epicenter of the crisis in our city. It is where mostly overdoses occur, and we need someplace where people can be walked. So be it police, fire, services, CSL, CSOs, Howard Center Street outreach, they can walk somebody. Someone in withdrawal is not going to wait to be driven. We don't want them driving if they do have a car, and GMT's already cut bus service. So we have to be realistic about the needs for the location and hopefully, and I do expect that this will all be discussed with people who have this concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. We'll go to Counselor Barlow.
Thank you, President Travers. First, I want to express my appreciation for all the planning work that's been done by you, Teresa, DJCR, and others in the administration. But if we were voting on the citing of an overdose prevention center anywhere in the city, and especially in our downtown, I would vote no tonight. My support tonight, and I am supporting this resolution, is for the grant funding necessary for continued community engagement and dialogue. I have significant reservations about the OPC in Burlington, given the current state of our city and the direction we seem to be heading. I started out the year actually fairly optimistic, that things were getting better and that we had turned a corner on the crises that have plagued us for the last four years. But as the summer wore on, I am having increasing doubts that we're on the right path. I continue to see more and more people in need coming to Burlington. They come because we're a caring, compassionate, and tolerant community. They come because we have almost all the county shelter beds, and our waterfront urban reserve is available as a campground for those who cannot find shelter. They come because there are multiple organizations that offer food and services for those in need, and they come because we have continued to build out our city response, last year spending millions. There are more, there's more help and resources available in Burlington than maybe anywhere else in the county and perhaps even the state. Yet our problems continue to grow, and our city continues to struggle. I can't help but wonder if our problems grow because the response and resources we have in Burlington don't exist in other Vermont cities and towns, and people are coming here to access whatever assistance and resources they can find here and nowhere else. All of us acknowledge that the state has abdicated much of their responsibility for mental health treatment, drug rehabilitation treatment, and emergency housing. But state inaction does not change the fact that the consequences of that inaction, in Chinnan County anyways, falls entirely on the city of Burlington to manage through. And while our city struggles, our neighbors continue to thrive and seek continued development and expansion. Just look in South Burlington and Williston and see the construction and vitality there. I fully understand the arguments around prioritizing harm reduction and tackling substance use disorder, and I don't disagree with harm reduction as a strategy. But what's desperately needed right now, more than ever, is statewide coordination of regional responses to solving these crises, with shared responsibility across municipalities for those in need. Burlington can no longer address this issue alone. And so, that's a sort of a statement, I guess, not a question. But I do have the question, it came up in the Board of Finance, which is, we had asked about risks. And I think this, we were going to confer with Attorney Ramen Krishnan to find out if we had any risk in grant repayment, if we did not find a site that was suitable for an overdose prevention center here in Burlington, and it wasn't a result of a federal action that kept us from standing up an OPC. So I'm interested to hear if there's anything more on that.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Attorney Brown, are you able to?
I am. If, I'll take it. I'll take it, Teresa, if that's all right with you. And I was able to consult with Attorney Ramen Krishnan, Assistant City Attorney Ramen Krishnan, who's been working closely with Teresa, reviewing the grant agreement and other documents related to the OPC and the state funding. And it's, I'll start by saying, it's hard to give a very specific answer to your hypothetical, right? But what I can say broadly is that the ways that the city, there are basically two theories under which the city could be held liable for reimbursing funding. And this is frankly true of any grant funding that we might get from the state or the feds or anywhere. And those are that we use the money for some other reason than the reason it was appropriated to us or allotted to us, right? Or some other breach of contract. And so, if the city, if the OPC does not materialize for some reason that could be attributed to actions or inactions, frankly, I guess, of the city, it would be certainly within the state's discretion to take the position that we had somehow breached the contract. Or, you know, it's harder for me to imagine that there would be any basis to allege that the city had used the money for some other, you know, some other reason than to try to stand up the OPC. So it seems more likely that the basis would try to be to argue some sort of breach of contract. You know, there is language in the grant. I had a little bit of time to look over the grant agreement during the break this evening. And, you know, there is language about due diligence that certainly we would try to demonstrate that we had exercised due diligence. But in short, if for some reason the OPC does not materialize, and it is because of decisions by the city, then it would be within the state's discretion to try to argue that we had somehow breached the contract and were liable to reimburse the state for money that we had spent. The other possibility is that if we demonstrated due diligence at trying to satisfy the contract, and it simply didn't work out, that the state and it simply didn't work out, that the state would not use its discretion to try to be reimbursed, but obviously, the balance of any money that the state appropriated to the city for the OPC would have to be returned to the state because it could not be used for anything else. So I hope that answers your question satisfactorily for now.
Thank you, yes, it does.
Also, I just want to point out that number 25 in attachment C sort of is the, is the place where what Attorney Brown is talking about lives in the contract.
Thank you, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I just make a response to Councilor Barlow? Like, I just appreciated everything that you said in your statement. And I guess I just wanted to say, like, folks that are here to, even if they are here because Burlington has the most services or has the services that they need, those folks are already here, and the services that are already here probably are going to still be here as well. And so we really actually hope that the OPC would be an additional support to, it's going to be a completely different center. This is innovative, it is new, and hopefully, the OPC will actually bring people inside, but also support our other social services that are not equipped to some degree to do some of the things that will, the staff and the way that the OPC is going to be structured, it is going to be structured specifically to be able to better manage and work with some of our highest-risk, most marginalized folks in our community. And so the goal of this is to actually be a supportive community partner and to be a part of how we can see some really great improvements. And the evaluation of the positive impacts that this center will have, I think, will be what allows us to sustain and grow beyond, you know, this is, as we've talked about before, not just a place that is going to allow for, you know, drug use to be supervised, but it's also going to be a hub, a center with embedded programs and other types of basic human needs that really can add to the human suffering that we're seeing in our community, actually. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there any other councillor, yeah, Councilor Bergman, go ahead.
Well, I wasn't going to speak, I was just going to support this, but I feel compelled by my colleague and friend Mark Barlow to make just a few comments. So first of all, thank you for the incredible work and for what promises to be additional incredible work that you're doing and are going to continue to do. Because the truth of the matter is, these are systemic problems, and every city in the United States, I dare say probably every city in the Western world, is facing these. And truth be told, they are not going to go away if we bury our head. It's just as simple as that. Don't do anything does not mean that people are going to stop coming here. Don't do anything doesn't mean that people aren't going to be engaged in behaviors that are problematic for themselves and the people around them, and therefore the community at large. So, of course, we need state assistance. Anybody, you know, with any sensibility would see that. They're not mutually exclusive. In fact, we've got to show that we can do this right and that it can be done in many other places. There's an article in The Nation Magazine this week about the, it's online, about the OPC in Rhode Island, and one of the things that, it's a lot about a person whose life has been saved by it. This is real need and real, yeah, we've got this real need. So let me just say again, thank you, we need it. It is not the magic single bullet, you know? It's not the mirror image or the opposite of a nuclear bomb that's just going to wipe it all away. There is no such thing, right? And we have got to bring everything into play. People have real concerns, and there's a difference between perceptions and reality, between fear and, you know, sort of like addressing the conditions that are really in place. And our job is going to be to suss that stuff out and do the best we can with our folks all the way around. And I have confidence that if we continue on this path, that we're going to do it. So not only do I hope that we unanimously support this resolution, but that we stand up and, to quote Spike Lee, "do the right thing" when it comes back to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bergman. Is there any other councillor that wishes to get in the queue on this item? Counselor Newbezer.
Yeah, I just want to say briefly, thank you so much for all your work, and I'm really excited that this is moving forward. And I just have to say, I also wasn't going to speak, and my friend and colleague prompted me to do so. It's important if we're taking a position or if folks take a position in conversations moving forward, that one of the tools in the toolkit shouldn't move forward, that you also present an affirmative, how are we going to deal with this? Because everybody recognizes at this table, we've been saying for months and years, that the state needs to step up and do more. Everybody recognizes that the problems we're facing are difficult and really hard and painful for individuals, for the community, et cetera. So I, for one, am supportive of trying to get every tool we can on the table to address community safety, and I think any implication that we, you're absolutely right, we disproportionately shoulder the burden around shelter beds in Chitting County and the state of Vermont. Is the solution that we should start closing shelter beds? Because I think that would be a ludicrous assertion, given the moment and given the conditions we're in. So I really appreciate this. I want the city to be racing toward implementing an OPC. I think it's critical. I think when we talk about public drug use in our public spaces, supporting our business community, this is such a critical, credible piece. When we talk about decreasing syringe litter and not seeing needles in the community, this is a critical piece, and all the evidence shows that to be true. And I hope that we, as a body, have the courage to go out and educate folks and have hard conversations with neighbors who might be skeptical of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Newbezer. Counselor Singh? And then Counselor Broderick? And then I'll turn to Counselor Newbezer for a motion on the item. Counselor Singh?
Thank you, Council President Travers. I appreciate all my colleagues' remarks tonight, and, you know, I will support tonight's resolution, but I do share some of the skepticism that my colleague, Counselor Barlow, has expressed. You know, we talk about harm reduction a lot, and as somebody who has dealt with, you know, intervening in people's lives and had it dramatically affect me personally, you know, mental health, going through counseling, trying to help somebody into recovery, I feel like a lot of times recovery isn't as much a part of the conversation as harm reduction. You know, I've talked to other people in recovery who find that these overdose prevention centers or when people are openly using drugs is very triggering. My good friend, who is a councillor and is in recovery and is now a sponsor for people, you know, I love this person dearly, and he told me once, you know, you're never going to think like me. You know, I'm going to do everything in my head to rationalize my use, and that you try to put a rational thought into this, it doesn't add up because I won't think rationally about this. And that's my concern going forward, is that we aren't talking most about recovery because the path out of this is getting people into recovery. And maybe the OPC can play a role here, but I remain skeptical, but I will support this resolution. And, you know, I know we've had a conversation, Teresa, and I expressed these concerns, and personally, it's, you know, addiction is a very hard thing for someone to take that path willingly in a lot of cases. And it doesn't mean that I care any less about these people. You know, my failure with getting somebody into rehab, you know, at some point you have to protect yourself and your family for the harms that are going on around you. And as somebody that sits here, as somebody that's supposed to be a steward of the city, there are times where we need to protect the city as a whole. And, you know, I'm trying to get where we are going on this, but I do have some skepticism. But I will support this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you, and thank you, Teresa, for everything. I'm very excited about this moving forward with public feedback and all, so I really appreciate your work. I won't, I'll try my best not to repeat what other councillors have said, but I do greatly appreciate all that has been said, including the fears. This is the time where fears need to be stated out loud because it's part of the process. Part of the process is, as you said, Teresa, it's about education. It's about knowing that this is not the whole solution. It's about knowing that there are very specific goals outlined with the construction of an OPC. Yes, a big part of it, and a big part of it should be, as a pathway to getting in touch with people who are in need of a path to recovery, among other things. But I think it is, it continues to be important to me to publicly state that harm reduction and that first step of things, including an OPC and a needle exchange, is preventing people from dying, full stop. And, well, yes, it's not the whole solution, and it's a shame that, it's a shame, but I take pride in how Burlington will once again lead on this issue when the state and federal governments continue to fail us. But I think it's just important to just say that these first steps are about reducing harm in our city, and I'm greatly appreciative for that. I will continue to be an advocate for a housing-first model in dealing with not just substance abuse, but homelessness, but with all issues that impact our society as a whole. But I'm greatly supportive of this because people are dying, and this is a way that we can at least try to mitigate that as we continue to do that comprehensive approach to meeting everyone's basic needs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. So I will mention to the council that this item comes to us with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, and the recommended motion from the Board of Finance is listed under Civic Clerk as the updated motion language. There's language that's original motion language, and then there's updated motion language, and that is the language that the Board of Finance has recommended we take on. Counselor Newbezer, you had indicated that you would be open to making a motion on this item. I'm mindful of the fact that the updated motion language is fairly wordy. You may read it in its entirety if you'd like, or if you'd rather move to adopt just the updated motion language on Civic Clerk, that would be in order as well.
Perfect. I thought I was going to have to read it. I move the updated motion language as listed on Civic Clerk.
Thank you, Counselor Newbezer. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Carpenter. Are there any further comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? That carries unanimously. So thank you, Teresa, to you and all of our partners in this effort, and we'll look forward to staying in touch.
Thank you so much. See you next time.
I should also mention before moving to the next item, thanks and gratitude to our state partners as well, without whom this would not be possible. The next item is item 6.3, Resolution Consumer Choice and Disclosure for Fuel Purchases Made with Debit Cards. The recommended action here on this item, as well as 6.4, is ultimately to refer these items to the Ordinance Committee for additional review. But Counselor Litwin, you are the main sponsor of both this item and 6.4, and I understand you'd like to take some time here to discuss the items before they head off to the Ordinance Committee. So Counselor Litwin, we'll turn to you.
Just very briefly, I wanted to start by saying that sometimes these smaller things can seem quite small compared to some of the things that we're talking about tonight. And so folks might be wondering, why am I spending my time on this when there are so many big problems in the community? And so what I want to say is, these things are just, I'll start with this resolution, which is to really just increase transparency and clarity for folks who are using debit cards at our gas stations around our city. It came to me from an older woman, neighbor on a fixed income, who went to the gas station, used her debit card, then went to the Hannafords and shopped and could not buy her groceries. She was declined. Why? Because, as a very common practice, as many of us maybe have been on the wrong side of, myself included, for gas stations to hold large amounts of money, sometimes up to $150, I've even had $200 held for several days while funds are clearing from the banking institution. And so I remember she panicked and ran back to the gas station, thinking something terrible had happened, and kind of got triangulated between the bank and the gas station, and in the end, she didn't get her groceries. And I ended up talking to a gas station manager that many of us know, and he said, he shared many stories with me about times where he bought families their pizza because now they couldn't buy their pizza after they filled their gas tank, because many folks in Vermont, Burlington, and everywhere else are living paycheck to paycheck. And many folks who don't have good credit or don't have credit, don't have a credit card, and they have to use a debit card. So ultimately, the goal for this is really just to disclose at the pump for folks who may be using a debit card that they may have a hold on their account, what that hold could potentially mean for them, and if there's an opportunity for them to go inside and pay inside and avoid that hold, that that be disclosed to them. I think that's particularly important for so many low-income and fixed-income Vermonters. So ultimately, this would enable the city to require that, and the Department of Permitting and Inspections to be able to enforce that should a gas station not come into compliance. I think we only have about 16 gas stations. This isn't, feel like a heavy lift to me, and many of them are owned by the same companies. So my hope is that, for me, this is a no-brainer, as they say, and I hope that everyone will support this. And for folks who have feedback or want to talk about this, there will be a transparent and public process in the Ordinance Committee when they are able to do so. The Ordinance Committee is often tasked with a lot of work, and so I cannot guarantee when that will happen, but I'm grateful for the feedback of the chair and for them taking, agreeing to take this up if passed.
Thank you, Counselor Litwin. Before turning to other councillors, could I get a motion from you on the item? Whenever you're ready.
Yes. Where is the recommended action? Would be back on the agenda, I moved around.
Should be right under, on the PDF version.
6.3, there we go. I would like to make a motion to waive the reading, adopt the resolution. Wave, my, I would like to make a motion to waive the reading, adopt the resolution, taking the requested action of referring the proposal to the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Are you all set?
I am.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Litwin. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? Counselor Bergman?
Well, I just want to say that I look forward to looking this up, looking, getting this, taking this up. That's the words I was looking for. And I think that, in addition to the details, which are always important in terms of us dealing with ordinances, that authority is something that we absolutely will have to consider. There is a provision in our charter which allows us to regulate the sale of gasoline. And it's, I believe, is an old regulation, maybe very early in the history of sales of gasoline, in fact, since our charter goes back a long way. And so the question of whether we actually have authority is something that we will need to find out and make a decision upon. But I just want to let folks know that I don't consider the problem of people having to choose between putting fuel in their car so they can get to a job, or they can get to a doctor or wherever, and being able to buy food as a small thing. And I'm not saying that you were, you know, you were taking that position. I think it actually is really important, and it speaks to dysfunctions in our system. And so I look forward to addressing this as forcefully and as clearly as we possibly can within the Ordinance Committee and come back with something. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on 6.3? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? That carries unanimously, which takes us to item 6.4. Counselor Litwin, could we turn to you to introduce this item?
Yeah, same drill a little bit. And thank you, Counselor Bergman, for acknowledging that it has different levels of importance to different people, and I appreciate that. I also just want to add, as I introduce this, Resolution for Consumer Choice and Disclosure of Parking Terms and Rates in Privately-Owned Lots, that I look forward to the conversation around authority. And so part of why I have crafted both 6.3 and 6.4 in the way that I have is to hopefully not overstep our authority by simply saying, I'm not telling you you can and can't, you can't do that, but you need to disclose your practices transparently with the consuming public. And so ultimately, 6.4 will hopefully also be referred to ordinance, would like to keep them busy. And again, this comes, this stems from a larger conversation, I think we've been having around our downtown and the vibrancy of our downtown. We have received letters, this council has received letters, from members of the visiting public who are just simply confused. They don't know the difference between one of the big, large, privately-owned lots that say "public parking," like the one in the former Walgreens parking lot, for example, and the publicly-owned parking garage directly next door. There can be wildly differing parking rates. When I just popped over just to see what it was at the moment, it was $9 an hour to park on Center Street. And I've heard stories of folks having to pay $25 for 15 minutes because they just didn't understand the difference. We have folks visiting from Quebec. We're trying to encourage that, and that is also confusing for our visiting Canadian friends. And so ultimately, what I am asking in this is to require privately-owned parking lot operators to include the words "privately-owned" and to make sure it's visible from the roadway. We've received some feedback from the Department of Public Works Chair that hopefully we will continue to work out in the Ordinance Committee, which will be helpful. They will ideally also have to clearly and visibly disclose their parking rates at the roadway in a manner that would inform the consumer prior to entering and parking. So it's not a surprise when you pull into the parking lot, get your parking space, get all your things and your baby out of your, into the baby carriage, go over to the kiosk and discover it's $9 an hour to park. It would also require them, if they are using dynamic or changing pricing models, where the price changes throughout the day based on demand and supply, that they have to clearly and visibly disclose the maximum possible rate that the consumer could pay, again, in a transparent manner. And lastly, we did get some feedback, and thank you, Counselor Singh, for bringing this to my attention, that there are folks with handicap parking permits who have thought that that is a public parking lot, not paid, and gotten $75 tickets. Why? Because we allow handicapped folks with plaque, proper placards, to park on our streets and in our city parking lots for free, as we should. And so this would also require those folks to say, to direct handicapped users of the parking lot to free parking on the street or in a city-owned parking lot. Ultimately, again, this is ideally just a transparency win for consumers and for the driving public, and to make our downtown less confusing and more inviting. I realize that we have other fish to fry, as they say, downtown, and that's not to say that we can't walk and chew gum at the same time. But I'm grateful for any support from my council colleagues so that we can start to clarify for the public which lots are actually publicly-owned and which ones are just private lots open to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Litwin. Could we get a motion from you on this item before turning to other councillors?
I would love to make the same motion, and I just have to get back to tab 37. I'm a tab monster, sorry. Yes, thank you. Okay, my recommended motion, or my motion would be to waive the reading, adopt the resolution, taking the requested action of referring the proposal to the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Any further comments on this item? Counselor Singh?
Thank you, Council President Travers, and thank you, Counselor Litwin, for bringing this resolution forward. Again, consumer disclosure is paramount, you know, for our public. And I really appreciate you taking the feedback with regards to handicap parking placards. You know, I personally witnessed this happen and had to run and tell the people that they wouldn't be able to park there without getting a ticket. So I think this is really important for the public, and I really appreciate you taking the time. Though, again, as you mentioned, it seems small in comparison to what we're facing as a city. You know, we have to do all these important works to make sure our downtown is accessible and welcoming to whoever comes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. Counselor McKnight?
Thank you, President Travers. I am happy to support this and hopefully see some good results from the Ordinance Committee. And I just wanted to thank Counselor Litwin for bringing this forward because I have been talking with him about this. You've been working on these resolutions for months, and I appreciate your respectfulness in kind of waiting until a lighter council agenda to get them on and kind of going back and forth. And, you know, I've really, in observing you work on these, I've learned a lot about how you handle constituent outreach and the care and thought that you put into that and representing your neighbors. And it's, you know, it's, it's just reminded me that for all of us sitting at this table, our job here is to make life better in Burlington for our constituents and to make it a little easier when we can. And that sounds straightforward, I think, but it's really not. It takes time. It takes being interrupted in your day. It takes going to sit in person or have a phone call that goes on for 45 minutes when you only had 15 minutes, because it really matters to get into the details. It takes sitting and talking with someone who you might disagree with on a lot of things, and you might feel yourself, you know, getting annoyed in that process, and you have to still be a good listener. And I've just been watching you do all of those things throughout this process, and I appreciate you bringing that here. And I think we all try to do that out and about, but it's just a good, good to underline that reminder. And, yep, I'll end that there. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Counselor Schacter?
I don't want to repeat what's been said, but I do just want to say that in my short time on council so far, I'm most, I feel most rewarded when we can take steps to make life a little bit easier and a little bit better for folks who live here in Burlington. So I'm pleased to be supporting this and to be seeing what comes out of the Ordinance Committee. I'm grateful. Counselor Litwin, thank you for bringing this forward. And when I think we can take steps to meaningfully improve the lives of those that we serve and represent, it means a lot to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schacter. Is there any other councillor which to be recognized on this item? All right, we'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed?
Aye.
That, was that a, I think that was a yes, right? Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that is unanimous, and thank you, Counselor Litwin. We'll now turn to item 6.5, A Resolution Funding for the BTV Cleanup Crew Litter Pickup Program. Counselor Newbeeser, you were the main sponsor on this resolution, and if you'd like, I'd be happy to turn the floor to you.
Yes, and I'm gonna turn right to Kason, if you'd indulge me, from the Peace and Justice Centre, just to give some context, really briefly, though, this is a resolution asking that we dedicate some of our councillor initiative funds to help cover the cost of what's been happening for a few months now, which Kason's gonna speak to, but the BTV Cleanup Crew that's been going around our downtown core, bringing neighbors together from all different political stripes and backgrounds. And it's just been a really exciting community project to watch unfold. So I'd love to turn it to you, just to give some brief background, and then hope that we can all support this resolution.
Yeah. Hello, councillors and mayor. Thank you for having me here, and thank you for considering this resolution. My name is Kason. I'm currently the Director of Operations at the Peace and Justice Centre here in Burlington. I've met some of you at the cleanups, actually, a few times, which I love. I started this iteration of the BTV Cleanup Crew this past May with a small group of friends, having no idea at the time that I would eventually be speaking to all of you about it. So thank you again for having me and taking an interest in this work. In short, we pick up litter, including specifically syringe litter in the downtown core every Thursday morning from about 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. We've done it for more than 15 weeks. We also respond quickly to C-Click Fix reports of stranded needles all across the city, having done that for the same 15-week span. And that's the short story, but let's see if I can tell a little longer story. The BTV Cleanup Crew started in May, and I believe all of you can probably recall what conversations around Burlington were like that month. The BTV Cleanup Crew arose out of our collective failure, and I mean all of us who live in this city. Not our failure to pick up litter, though that did provide us with a task, but instead a more sinister and insidious failure to come together as a city in compassion and empathy to solve problems. In May, when the BTV Cleanup Crew started, it seemed like the heart of Burlington and the soul of Burlington were fighting with each other. By the heart of Burlington, I mean our downtown, complete with all the local businesses so many of us love. I can't think of a single Burlingtonian who doesn't love the fact that we have a stunning, walkable, people-oriented downtown, filled mostly with locally-owned businesses like Outdoor Gear Exchange, Battery Street Jeans, Muddy Waters, Phoenix Books, et cetera. These businesses are facing significant macroeconomic headwinds from a hostile federal government alienating Canadian tourists and increasing upfront costs through tariffs. The rise of online retail giants like Amazon, the nationwide opioid epidemic that hits very close to home for so many of our most vulnerable neighbors, along with some specific local issues like the structurally necessary but burdensome construction on Main Street. These businesses signed a letter, I'm sure many of you can recall. Within that letter were many different requests, one of which was to clean up stranded syringe litter, as well as other litter downtown. Yet the entire conversation at the time seemed to revolve around our Food Not Bombs chapter, which is what I meant when I said "the soul of Burlington." We are lucky enough to have perhaps the most impressive mutual aid network in the entire country, right here in Burlington. It might even be among the most impressive anywhere in the world. The logistical difficulty of serving food every single day for five years, including holidays, involving more than 1,000 Burlingtonians volunteering their own time over the years with nobody being paid, is truly a miracle we should be very proud of. This mutual aid network will be increasingly necessary as federal funding cuts get pushed through that shrink the cash in our wallets, lessen our spending power, and make our lives more difficult across the board. We will need to take care of each other in Burlington, particularly the most vulnerable among us, and that's who I believe we are at our best. Somehow, though, through the mistakes, misstatements, and errors of every single one of us, we started fighting with each other, blaming each other for our problems rather than coming together to solve them. So what are we going to do about all of these things? Are we going to continue to fight, or are we going to come together and build each other up? And that's why I started the BTV Cleanup Crew. I wanted to find a task that could bring everybody together, and picking up syringe litter and other litter, which we all recognize as a public health hazard, seemed like a perfect fit, and I must say the results have been very promising. Since the BTV Cleanup Crew started, we've engaged more than 100 volunteers from all different walks of life, Democrats and progressives, city councillors and unhoused neighbors, regular Food Not Bombs volunteers, and downtown business owners, all of them coming together as people who love Burlington and want to do something to help. With your support on this resolution, we could build on the success and expand it. We could buy more Sharps containers, more supplies like sturdy work gloves, grabbers, garbage bags, to keep us doing this in perpetuity. We could even expand to a second likely weekend morning, which we fully intend to do with these funds. Cities like Burlington can be the forefront of the resistance against the creeping fascist menace we are all facing right now. In fact, in my view, cities like ours have a responsibility to be. But we will be incapable of being that if we don't find a way to come together as a city and stand up for each other. The BTV Cleanup Crew has been my way of trying to bring us together, and I like to think it is working. With your support, we can keep it going. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions from any of you.
Thank you for being here. Counselor Newbeeser, you're pretty much at time here and now that you had allotted to you. Are you all set? Okay. Are there any other councillors that wish to be recognized on this item? We'll go to Counselor Litwin. Yep, go ahead.
Thanks so much. I wanted to thank you, and we met in the CDNR meeting recently, so thanks for doing what you're doing. Just a couple of quick things. Fewer questions and more just clarification, I think, for the public who are watching from home, which is that, first, thank you. I remember when I first became a councillor being overwhelmed by all the things I wanted to be doing, and quickly having to realize how little capacity I had to do all those things and how dependent I needed to be on community. And not having the right connections at the time, I started buying grabbers with my own little fund pool that we have, and stapling safety guides that I was making, and handing out laundry containers to folks in the New North End who just said, hey, I don't mind, I want to be part of the solution. But I had nowhere to point them. So it was sort of like a self-serve, and I keep one in my car in the same way. I didn't love that because I wasn't sure that folks would be safe or that they would have the right equipment with them at all times. And so I love the idea that there's more of a unified approach that's being held by an organization that's so deeply entrenched and trusted in our community. I also want to say that we at CDNR are currently working through a lot of conversation around some of the silos that just sort of naturally existed between different groups of folks who were all sort of doing the same thing, but not with each other or knowing each other. And so I guess you're gonna get a preview to one of the recommendations likely to come out of CDNR, which is to continue to support the work of Teresa Vazina and the Mayor's Office, who have been instrumental in trying to provide some much-needed operational support in terms of liability waivers, access to free Hep B vaccines, and other sort of, I guess, necessities that need to be considered. And so this is, I think, I will be supporting this tonight because I think you've been doing the work and are continuing to do the work, and this money will be used in a way that gets syringes off our streets and parks and so forth, and back to the SSPs for disposal. But we need to keep making sure that we're working in sync, that we're communicating openly and frequently with each other so that we're not losing the thread. Because we want to support this work, but we also want to make sure that we don't have a bunch of boxes around have a bunch of boxes around town that, um, no one's servicing because things can drop off, or, um, that folks don't know that somebody else already did an area, or something to that effect. So, um, ultimately, I would like to see us, um, also work with the Agency of Human Services, um, to help offset the costs that this municipality faces. $1,500 is a small amount of money compared to many of the expenses we have, but at the end of the day, we, we do need more support from VDH, DSU, the AHS, um, to not just provide this orange service, um, services, but to help us clean up and mitigate, um, environmental waste in our community. The volunteers are stepping up, thankfully, um, but we also need the state to be a, a clear partner in that. So, thank you very much for my, and I, I'm fine with the rest of my time.
Thank you, Councilor Littman. Councilor Schachter?
Um, I just want to repeat what I said in the prior resolution I just voted for, which is that, um, thank you for all the ways that you've, you and so many others, and I've been able to participate, and I look forward to the next Thursday morning at 7:30 a.m. morning that I can be there. Um, but I, I just want to say thank you for all you've done, and that so many do, to help make life just a little bit nicer and easier here in Burlington. And, um, I do think that these are the things that bring us together, um, and that we need to be leaning more into. Um, and so, uh, I'm happy to be supporting this tonight, very grateful, um, for all you've done. I look forward to what CDNR is working on, so that we can really put even more sort of, um, I think, comprehensive support around the ways that community members are stepping up, um, like you all have been, uh, to help support our community. So, just words of gratitude.
Thank you, Councilor Schachter. Yep, some comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming, Councilor Schachter. It was so nice to meet you that, that morning. Um, and I have been in conversation with Teresa quite a few times, like, um, Bella Fern, who, uh, works for the Vermont Harm Reduction Advocates, who's been a, a big partner with me in this, um, has set up many a Zoom meeting where we've, I've sort of talked to Teresa about the sort of the comprehensive plan. So we're, we're definitely in conversation and in collaboration with Teresa as much as we can be, and we, we're definitely as supportive, um, of any sort of comprehensive strategy that, that the city comes up with, and we want to be part of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Schachter. Councilor Grant?
Hi, um, thank you so much for the work. I've been able to attend a few times, and I've got one of the grabbers in my car, um, in addition to needles. Like, some days you find there's not as many needles as people think they are, given the rhetoric in the community, so that's been eye-opening for some people. Um, at times I find myself more obsessed with cigarette butts, which are a huge issue. Um, I look forward to like a weekend pickup. I would definitely welcome that and would be available to help, um, with that. And I thank you for really, um, talking about the mutual aid network that we have. Um, and it is very, very strong, um, in our central district because of the issues that we see at a higher frequency, um, than other districts. And we have, um, so many of us are just closer, we could be part of marginalized groups, but we're also closer to, to what marginalized groups are experiencing. Um, and I think that's why the network has held up so strong for so long with the different groups that we have, um, from feeding people to providing things like toiletries, uh, for people, to, um, providing funds to do a stopgap for people who have an economic crunch and just need some gas in their car for a week in order to make sure they get to work till their next paycheck, or, um, maybe they can't afford that birthday cake for their child, and they just need a little bit just to have a party for their kid. Um, things like this that are still so important. And, um, and people, meeting people. I think it's been great for people from the outer wards who come downtown and meet people from the inner wards, and, uh, really get a chance to see what's happening and get a chance to, to walk around our community. So I definitely support this, and thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on this item? All right. Uh, the recommended action is to waive the reading and adopt the resolution. Councilor Newbeeser, could I turn to you for a motion?
Um, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Uh, thank you, Councilor Broderick. Um, one last call. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. The last item on our deliberative agenda is item 6.6, an ordinance raising the mandatory retirement age for Class A employees. Uh, Councilor Barlow, I believe you may have some comments and a motion on this item.
Uh, thank you, President Dravers. Um, yes, um, so this item came to me, um, by email from a, uh, a Burlington firefighter who's approaching a mandatory retirement age, and I met him and we talked about it, and he informed me that there's at least four other firefighters who are, um, approaching this mandatory, um, retirement age. So, um, we started a process of looking into where it's defined and if we might, um, raise it. Um, and I was in sort of a rush, because, uh, the firefighter who brought this to me is actually gonna be 60, the current mandatory retirement age, in November. So I was trying to get this done in time, so that he could stay employed with the City of Burlington, which he, he wants to do, so, um, but in my haste, um, I guess there are some, some other folks who want to weigh in on, on this, um, in the administration. So, um, I was asked to, um, perhaps go a little slower. And so what I will be doing is to, moving to postpone this, um, until our next meeting, um, with the assurances that, um, should we take it up again, that we would still be able to get it passed in time to make sure, in all stages of passage before November, so it could take effect. So I will be moving to postpone this, this evening until, until a time certain of our next meeting, which, whose date escapes me at the moment, but I'm sure you know about.
Yeah, September 29th.
September 29th. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion to postpone this item to our next meeting on September 29th. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilor Grant. Thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion to postpone? Councilor Carpenter?
This isn't really on the motion to post, well, it is on the motion to postpone, I guess, because I really want to take the time to look in and see if we get rid of the age in entirety. I was sort of taken aback that we had that, and, uh, my guess is that's a very old requirement. So, uh, and the administration's aware of, um, that, and will also kind of look at that, because in this day and age, and needing experienced staff, um, to retain people, that's something we've got, just got to look at.
Thank you, Councilor Carpenter. Any other councillors on the motion to postpone? We'll go to a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, that carries unanimously, so we will take this item up at our next meeting on September 29th. Uh, that concludes our deliberative agenda, which takes us to item 7, which is our agenda item on committee reports. Is there any councillor with a?
Point of information?
Yes.
Did we, uh, move a consent, uh, agenda item onto our deliberative agenda? Or did I miss that? Oh, never mind. Thank you.
Um, right. Yes, there was, there was an item regarding a grant involving the airport, which was taken off of the agenda. Is that what you're referring to, Councilor Barlow?
It was.
Okay. Yep. So that, that was off the agenda, uh, in its entirety, and we anticipate it may come back at a later meeting. So we have finished our deliberative agenda, which now takes us to item 7, which is committee reports. Is there any councillor with a committee report? Councilor McKnight?
The Charter Change Committee will be having our first meeting of the new session, taking up the REIB Charter Change on, uh, this coming Monday, September 15th, um, at 1:00 p.m. Sharon Busher Conference Room.
Thank you, Councilor McKnight. Councilor Grant?
Thank you. Um, the REIB Committee will be meeting Tuesday on September 16th, and then the Public Safety Committee meeting will be meeting, uh, Thursday, September 25th.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Any other councillors? Councilor Littman?
Thanks so much. I just saw Councilor Bergman's hand go up at the same time, so I'll be quick. Um, CDNR, Community Development Neighborhood Revitalization, um, I just wanted to share, we've had extra meetings this summer. We've been meeting on, uh, I would say nearly a bi-weekly basis, because we've had a couple big items sent our way. Um, most importantly for this council is, um, the Syringe Litter Report that was created by our Board of Health. They spent six, uh, months preparing that for us, and we have been, um, going right along with a variety of stakeholders, some of whom are here tonight, actually, many of whom were. Um, and we originally had hoped to have, um, a report to you either tonight or, or coming, um, but we've run into a variety of unforeseen's. So we're still working with the Department of Health, um, getting a bunch of documents for review. There's been a lot of back and forth there that continues, um, even today, um, but all very positive and productive. Um, we've also had, uh, had, had difficulty reaching the Howard Center, um, and have only recently discovered that they were having trouble receiving our emails. So, um, I am in contact with their leadership team now, and we may, um, rearrange some of our scheduling to try and make sure that that very important stakeholder, uh, has the opportunity to join us before making any draft reports for our committee that would then need to review, debate, and vote out. So it may take us a little longer than, um, maybe ideal, but good governance takes time. Um, and I just want to thank all the members of the public, the stakeholders, the organizations, um, Spat Turning Point, all sorts of folks who took their time to come out to, on beautiful summer nights, um, to talk to us about, uh, the syringe litter and the issues around syringes in Burlington. Um, and I also want to thank Teresa Vazina and the Mayor's Office, um, which we touched on briefly, for, um, just the very important coordinating work that is coming out of, um, her work, while she's also very busy trying to open our very first OPC. Um, and then I want to thank Councilor Schachter, who has been working tirelessly to keep AgeWell, uh, the very beefy AgeWell report, on track. Um, and then we have a report coming soon from Sido, um, and, uh, we will be taking up, and that report will be related to business, um, uh, support for the business community who has been impacted by the construction. Um, so heads up, business community, and, um, Kelly Devine, if you're listening up above. Um, and then lastly, um, we're soon, hopefully, to start taking up regional programs, uh, regional program funding. So we stay busy, um, in the CDNR this, uh, semester, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Littman. Councilor Bergman?
Uh, so the Ordinance Committee has been meeting, and you will get at the next, um, council meeting, the nudity ordinance. Uh, we will have, uh, some clarity in terms of the definitions, and also a provision around, uh, free speech, um, just to make sure that things are, um, not unconstitutional. So that, that is coming, and then we are meeting, if my phone will stay, on, on the 18th. And so we have just referred a number of things, and we will start to, uh, deal with that and, uh, make sure that, I think, the one item that we have, uh, outstanding is, uh, is, uh, taken, um, taken care of, so that we can, um, report back to the council, um, on that as we move into these other things. So I think that is it, Thursday, the, uh, the 18th, at, uh, 4:30, in the Busher Conference Room.
Thank you, Councilor Bergman. Are there any other councillors with a committee report? All right. Uh, that takes us then now to item 8, which is City Council, General City Affairs. Is there any councillor that wishes to speak on general city affairs? Councilor Broderick? And then Councilor Grant?
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. I, I just wanted to respond to the resident who, um, came to a public forum today, um, for the second time, I, I believe, expressing his, um, concern with, um, the, the number 11 no longer, um, going to, in particular, the hospital, but also the airport. Um, I, I, and GMT's response, very, very surprising and a little concerning to me, advising, uh, him and his elderly neighbors to traverse the University of Vermont in Medical Center parking lot, when I, if I were in that position, which I, I am, I live on College Street, um, I think the better option would be to take the 1 or the 11 from Main Street to Downtown Transit and transfer onto the 2, which does still go to the hospital. It's still not ideal, especially if you're, um, limited in mobility, um, and so I completely agree with that. Um, but, um, hopefully, him or his neighbors will get this message. Um, and I, I would, the, the number two bus still goes to the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Broderick. Councilor Grant?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to do a reminder, uh, to the community and also my fellow councillors, um, on the Public Safety Committee meeting, uh, when we meet with both chiefs, we get data. We get copious amounts of data. And, um, we're also now, uh, going forward again with consistently providing heat maps. Um, this is really crucial quantitative, uh, information, and it also serves to inform us of where the activity around the incidents, um, and the types of incidents that are occurring in the city. And it helps to also back up what are anecdotal concerns that people have. We know, um, the activity moves around in certain ways. And as I've seen, um, as we're enforcing, um, pushing people who previously might have stayed overnight in City Hall Park, they're starting to show up in, in, in different areas, um, in some cases moving out of, um, Central District. Traditionally, it's been Central District, and of course, parts of Ward 8 and parts of Ward 5. Um, I just think that it is really helpful for people to be looking at the data, having an understanding of the activities, and having an understanding of the quantitative data. Um, I think it, it educates us in a way where we fully get to the multiple layers of the issues that we are experiencing, and then we can have more fruitful conversations about the various holistic response that we, we need to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. Is there any other councillor that wishes to be recognized on general city affairs? All right. Um, next item is City Council President, Council Updates. I do not have any update. Um, and so, you know, I said before the meeting, I thought it would be a straightforward agenda. Mayor, you told me not to do it, but here, here we are, before nine o'clock, uh, absent objection, um, and seeing no other business before the council, I will adjourn our meeting at 8:57 p.m. Thank you very much. Thank you.